I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that Councilman Gaston will not be here tonight. We will now have our invocation by Councilman Dan Roof.
With pleasure.
Oh, I apologize. Getting ahead of myself. We now get the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, been motioned second. Any question? All in favor? Poses? Let's record show six zero. Now, we have invocation by Councilman Dan Roof.
That's great. Heaven Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. And I just found out that it said that we were going to do a proclamation for Ms. Geneva Bell and understand that she passed away yesterday, 108 years old. And just what a life she took, so many lives. And we're just so thankful to have had her for all this 108 years. And just prayers for all of our family, just come for them and be with them in this loss. What we just ask your blessings on this county and this country? Or we just ask that you, God, direct us as we make decisions concerning this county? We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Roof. Now we get the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Been motioned second that we approve the minutes. All in favor? Poses? Let's record show six zero. Now we down to public presentation. I'd like to also emphasize and express my condolences to the Bell family for the loss of Ms. Geneva. But we will still recognize Ms. Geneva because that's more than a million that someone lived to be 108 years old. That's a blessing. And at this time, we let Dr. Roberts.
Ms. Veronica? And before I read the proclamation again, thank you so much for letting me know on yesterday. And thank you for having the courage to show up today to receive this on behalf of Ms. Bell. She would definitely be missed, but thank you for allowing us to honor her life and her legacy. The proclamation reads as follows. Ms. Geneva Bell celebrated her 108th birthday on February 21, 2025, at home with family and friends. Ms. Bell was born in Fairfield County to Marie and Boykin Butler and graduated from Piney Grove School. She was married to George Bell Senior, and this marriage brought forth 12 children. She faithfully attended Mount Olive Baptist Church in Longtown, South Carolina, prior to the pandemic, and she served on the senior usher board. She enjoyed reading the Bible, watching Western shows like Gunsmoke, coloring, and spending time with family. She loved sharing her wisdom, life experiences, her love of God with her family and those she came in contact with. She has nine living children, 52 grandchildren, 95 great-grandchildren, 72 great-great-grandchildren, and nine great-great-great-grandchildren. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Chairman Clarence Gilbert, District Seven, and the members of the Fairfield County Council would like to recognize, honor, and celebrate the 108th birthday of Ms. Geneva Bell. We pray that God will forever hold her in the palm of His hand. So ordered this 24th day of March, 2025.
Now we down to item seven, public comment session. Dr. Roberts? Oh, I apologize. Item B, Lake Wateri Algae Presentation. Mr. Randy Kelly and Mr. Rod Wilks.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the council for giving us a little bit of time this evening. My name is Rod Wilks. I grew up here in Winsboro, very fortunate enough to have property at Lake Wateri, also the first vice chair of the Lake Wateri Association. For the last year or so, maybe more, we've been looking at a pretty serious problem that is occurring out of the lake that we wanted to make you aware of. It's a problem that we're kind of coming with a solution. We've been, as I mentioned, actively trying to figure out how you address a problem. And it's called Lingbia Algae. And here with me also is Randy Kelly, who's the chair of our water watch committee. He knows more about it than I do, so I'll be turning it over to him pretty shortly. But this is what it looks like on the screen. Basically, it's a mat of, it smells horrible. It's a mat of just growth, kind of slimy. It's going to appear in more shallow water. It's going to appear where the water's warm. It's going to appear where there's a lot of nutrients that kind of fuels it. And unfortunately, all those situations kind of line up at Lake Wateri, particularly around people's property, around their docks. The lake is over 100 years old, and so there's been years and years and years of nutrients streaming into the lake. It's also not very deep overall. And once it's around someone's docks, it makes the property almost unusable. You can't get to the dock. You can't get in the water. And our concern is for property values. It's very bad for fish, destroys the fish and whatnot. But there is something you can do about it. We're very fortunate enough that maybe the world's leading expert on this is a professor at Clemson University. He's retired. We reached out to him for help, and he volunteered to help, literally volunteered to help. So he's going to give us his time to help us figure out, you know, how do you treat this and how do you get rid of it? He gave us this slide, which I think is pretty compelling. It's showing kind of a, on this graph, it's kind of how this is going to evolve. I asked him, you know, what is this going to be like? And, you know, how long are we talking? I even kind of threw out, will this be my grandkids or what? He goes, no, you're going to see the impact of this much sooner, meaning it's going to be significantly around the lake if you don't act now. There was a drawdown for the work at the dam. That actually is accelerating things out there for this as well. And so what that graph shows is, if you can catch this early, you can remediate it, and it doesn't cost a lot of money. Unfortunately, we're not there yet. I put an arrow where we are. We're kind of in the yellow area there, which is it's fairly extensive right now at Lake Wateri. We're doing a survey to figure out exactly where all it is. We're literally dragging rakes at the lake to understand exactly where it is and to where it needs to be treated. But we could be further to the right there toward the red. This is a problem in other lakes around the southeast. On the Catawba chain, we're by far the worst. But they're starting to address this at Lake Wiley and Lake Norman. But they're further to the left. So they're in a little bit better shape in that regard. There's a lake, Lake Gaston, which Randy might mention, in Virginia. They're solidly in the red, and Randy will share what their dollars are to treat it with where they are in the process. So that's what we're here to talk about. Again, we've been working on this for a while. We've got a solution. Now we've just got to get all the stakeholders that are involved with Lake Wateri to all work together and figure out how we can kind of stem this before it gets even worse. So Randy?
Thanks, and good evening. I too appreciate the chance to be heard for a few minutes tonight. I want to just very quickly talk a little bit about why we think we have the problem and why we think it's not going to get any better. It certainly get worse. The graph that you see is just a timeline of the amount of phosphorus that's coming into our lake. We have the same problem with nitrogen. Basically, it's fertilizer that's feeding our lakes. We have some runoff from our basin, but most of it comes in from upstream. We run through, the river runs through a population of about 2 million people, and you can imagine the development and the associated runoff and everything that used to go into the ground, but now because of the imperious nature of the surface, because of roofs and parking lots and what have you, a lot of that, a lot more of it's running into the river. So we're basically creating a great growth situation in coves that have shallow water, that are calm, get lots of sunlight, and they're fed abundantly with all these nutrients. We started surveying for the lingvia several years ago. I think the first one was in 2014. And we've done those every year along with Duke Energy. Up until 2021, we had to stop because the lake was drawn down because of modifications on the dam. And so 21 is the last survey that we had done. And that's what you see here. Each one of those dots represents an occurrence of the lingvia. And checking back more recently, we know that it's still there and probably even getting worse. But just to accentuate that point, if you look at the little red circle, that's an area that we were able to do right before Hurricane Helene came through. We had planned to do an entire survey to update it before we started this project with treatment, but the storm wiped that out. But a couple of folks got out ahead of the storm and were able to survey that one little area. And if you notice, there are no dots in that circle. That was in 2021. And what we saw back in September when we did the partial survey is that now there's 37 lingviasites where, just in 2021, there were none. So we know that it's growing and spreading rapidly. So if we look at where we are on that curve right now, as Rod said, we're more in the yellow, where it still can be treated and somewhat contained. But if we wait, the longer we wait, the more we get into the red. So again, we know it's getting worse. We know that it can get a whole lot worse, and it's not likely to get any better without some type of treatment. As Rod said, the dollars on this are pretty staggering. What you see in the box on the left is Lake Gaston in North Carolina. It's not a Duke lake. It's not on the Catawba, but it's a great example of what happens when this gets out of hand. They have a treatment program that they've been running for six or eight years now, and they do have several areas under control and contained, but it is getting worse. I wanted you to see the participation that it takes to be able to do the fundraising. They have five surrounding counties, and they're all contributing well in excess of $100,000 a year. And then you have state and cities that are fed by the water system. All in all, it amounts to a staggering amount of money, well over $100 million. Compare that to Lake Norman up above us on the chain. They just discovered lingvia in about 10 sites just a year or so ago, and they got very aggressive and started to treat it. They have similar participation from the counties. Duke Energy, because it's a Duke lake, unfortunately, they participate in a very small way. But their cost is only about $60,000 a year. Both of these are multi-year programs. They're ongoing. Lake Norman hopes they'll be able to solve theirs in about four years because of getting on it early. The program that we're embarking on is, we think, is a state-of-the-art program. As Rod said, we've rallied some of the best resources. Dr. Rogers is donating his time. We also have the best treatment applicator, the most recognized, successful applicator in the southeast. And we're going to have the resources of the Catawba Wateri Water Management Group to do the financial administration for us. That's a group that consists of members of the water treatment facilities all over the Catawba River. I think there are about 18 of them. So we think we're well on track, and we'd like to solicit your help. I'd close with just an invitation for you to participate in a funding workshop that we have planned. We think it's going to be on April the 10th. That's a tentative date right now, probably 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. If you haven't been invited, you will be. And we need your help. We need your participation. So I think with that, we're closed and take any questions that you might have. Well, that's a great question, and nobody really knows. There are a lot of different sources. Boats coming from other lakes might have brought some in and transferred it that way. It might have drifted down from upstream. We really don't know how it got here. But the sad thing is that it's found a very welcoming environment. It started real small. I think we saw it for the very first time behind Bird Island on the lake. And every year we've surveyed, we see it more and more places. Essentially, yes. It's not pouring it on. It's actually taking it down to the lake bed. This stuff grows on the bottom. And those nasty mats that you see are in warm weather when it releases and starts floating up to the top. And that's where you get the smell and the dock blockage and all that sort of thing. It can be toxic, but I think the worst thing that we should expect to see is skin irritations and that sort of thing. We don't want pets to ingest it because it can be very, very harmful if you swallow it. But yeah, it's a chemical treatment. It's a copper-based treatment that is EPA-approved. It's totally safe for irrigation, fishing, swimming, all that sort of stuff. It's very safe. And it's got a blue color to it, so you can see it when it's applied. But it very quickly dissipates into the water, so that it really doesn't have any effect at all, other than to treat the algae that it's targeted for. That's right. That's why we're doing the survey, so we know exactly where it is. And then the applicator will come behind us with sonar and get even more detailed. And they'll actually pipe the stuff. They're in airboats, so they can go in very shallow water, wherever it is. And they'll pump it down to maybe just a few inches above the bottom of the lake where the stuff is living, and apply it right there. So we'll get very close to it. Not really likely to see any on the surface because of the way it's supplied. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your work during this. I think one of the important things about people here is that they're a part of the Lake. On our side of Lake, there's a couple of 25 to 35 permanent problems. And therefore, people and their money with them, accommodation, all of that, support for this. So to use that lake as a part of that, per course of this, from my experience on the lake, I can recall seeing it for the first time, this lingvia, 12 years prior to death. And it's, we all were, they do have a question about funding. Can you tell us, the county's first officer, if you ever looked back at the money, if you expected to have it? Okay, thank you. I should have mentioned that. We actually have Lancaster involved as well. And so we're targeting, I think, about 30,000, if we could get 30,000 from each county. We think the initial treatment is going to cost somewhere between $120,000 and $150,000. And again, that's an ongoing program if we don't have to ramp up and treat more sites.
Annual program.
Annual program. And that consists of six monthly treatments during the warm weather months, April through September, once a month. And I should say, I think Rod touched on this, we're getting a bargain, I think, because of the services of this expert. If you look at, again, Lake Gaston up in North Carolina, they pay an extension agent from NC State $75,000 to manage their treatment program. And they charge about $25,000 to $30,000 for conducting the survey, even though it's largely done by volunteers. Our survey is all volunteers, 100%. Everybody operates at their own expenses, including buying the equipment, which is basically a rake, and going out on their own boats with their own gas. And we think that's a cost of about 30 grand, like I say. So...
Yep. I'll be throwing the rake on Thursday myself. Thank you again.
And I've been out, I was out last Friday, and I'll be back out Thursday, too.
What day did you, is this a fundraiser you're having? No?
No, we're trying to organize, we are organizing a meeting. We're calling it a funding meeting, but we're gathering all of the potential contributors to the funding. And that's targeted for April 10th, but we're not sure about that. It would be at, we think it's going to be at Catawba Falls Events. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Wilks.
Thank you.
At this time, we have our public comment session. Dr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of council, Joanne Hook?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joanne Clowney-Hook. I was born and reared in Fairfield County, as was my dad, as was his dad. We've been there forever in the upper part of the county. Peggy was elected as our district council member. And we've all been blindsided by the fact that every committee that you have on the council has members, but she's not assigned to any of those committees. And we pay taxes. And that's one thing, we're not going to be able to go and not pay taxes. We want our representation seen as well. We've always been the redheaded stepchildren of the county in Feasterville. We are that way when it comes to fire, EMS, anything that happens in the county. I can promise you, it most likely happens last there, if it happens at all. The closest daily firefighter would be in Jenkinsville, and that's 25 minutes from my home, and I am by far not at the end of the county. So during the day, our guys are not there. And in our community, we stand shoulder to shoulder. I don't care if you're white or black. We stand shoulder to shoulder, and we support each other. And we look for that equal support here on this council. That's why we pay taxes. I'm sure VC Summer is a huge percentage of the tax revenue for Fairfield County. We should at least be able to see some of those come to fruition. And we want, I just would like to know why she was not elected or put on any councils, however you assign them, when you've got the members you have, the amount of committees you have. And it seems odd to me also that she's the only female, and she's not assigned to a single one. I just don't understand how that happens in this day and age. If you've got 14 committees and you've got seven members, you don't have to be a mass scholar to know that if you put two council members each, then everybody carries the load. And that's what we want. I don't mind carrying my load. I always will. But we look for the same from our council. Thank you.
Tangie Bryce Jacobs?
All right. Good afternoon, County Council. Tangie Renee Bryce Jacobs, District Three. Normally, I do not write things down. I speak off the cuff. But this time, because of the seriousness of this matter, I am going to read to you all what I wrote. Voting is the language of American democracy. It is the ability to participate in civic life, to have a voice in choosing elected officials whose decisions impact our lives, our families, and our communities. And voting is at the core of what it means to be an American. All right? As I stand before this council regarding our District Three elected councilwoman, Peggy Swearingen, with the full understanding that the chair of this council has the right to appoint whomever or whoever they choose. Okay? In your decision to exclude our elected official is undemocratic. Just to be clear, undemocratic means a process or decision that is controlled or made by one person or a small number of people rather than by all people involved. I started receiving phone calls, emails about this decision. Your decision rendered questions like, isn't Peggy the only female on the county council? I'm running out of time. Oh, jeez. Okay. Well, real quick, because I've only got a couple of seconds left, I have here signed petitions by people in Feasterville across Blair because we want our representative to have her rightful place, her rightful place. She represents us.
As I stand before this council regarding our District Three elected, elected Councilwoman Peggy Swearingen, with the full understanding that the chair of this council has the right to appoint whomever or whoever they choose, okay? In your decision to exclude our elected official is undemocratic. Just to be clear, undemocratic means a process or decision that is controlled or made by one person or a small number of people, rather than by all people involved. I started receiving phone calls, emails about this decision. Your decision rendered questions like, isn't Peggy the only female on the county council? I'm, I'm running out of time. Oh, jeez. Okay, well, real quick, because I've only got a couple of seconds left. I have here signed petitions by people in Feasterville across Blair because we want our representative to have her rightful place, her rightful place. She represents us, and we want her, I got a couple of minutes, let me read what it says. "We, the residents of District Three, believe in fair and transparent governance that ensures every community has their voice in county affairs. The recent removal of our elected representative from all committee assignments without explanation has effectively stripped our district of meaningful representation. We demand full transparency and accountability from county council regarding this decision. Our community deserves to know why our voice has been silenced, which led to this action, and what steps will be taken to restore our rightful participation in this decision-making process." Thank you very much.
Brandon Henderson?
Good evening, council. Mr. Chair, distinguished council, councilman. Just to follow up on Ms. Tangi, I'm here, um, from District Three to speak on, um, well, let me just back it up a little bit. One of the earliest things I learned, amazing things can happen with proper representation. And we don't have that right now in District Three, at all. And it also reminded me of an incident, maybe, what, two thousand and thirteen or so, that actually led me to start my feasibility study to bring a municipality to Western Fairfield County. And that's surrounding the, the recreation center that's assigned to District Three, but that's all the way across the county, where District Two is literally across the street. Now, that situation, land was granted to Fairfield County to put a recreation center on outside of the county. But for whatever reason, they said that they, they couldn't go through the regulations with the NRC, that it couldn't pass, uh, fast enough. But at the same time, a contract was already signed for that, uh, for construction prior to that, for it to be completed December of that year. So that just goes to show you how long we've been underrepresented in Western Fairfield County. Redheaded stepchildren, my hair's not red. Those days are over. We need representation. We need a municipality over there. We need ambulance service, we need everything. And step one of that is having representation here on this county council, at least on a committee. And I see that you have a special presentation, presentation committee, excuse me, I'm a little bit hyped up right now because that situation really grinds my gears, because this is District Three, this is District Two, and the building is right here. How did that happen? Lack of representation, that's how it happened. If this, if our representative now was there then, she would have asked the question, well, why are you putting that right there? Who approved that? Those are the type of questions that need to be asked. Like, those are the simple questions that need to be asked to get the simple answers, so that we can move forward. And for me personally, Ms. Peggy, she represents that well, very well. It's not a time that I, I can't call her, she doesn't answer, and if she doesn't have the answer, she's gonna get back to me with that answer. And if not, she's gonna tell me what to call, every single time. And also, another unique thing about Ms. Peggy, I'm all over District Three, I'm all over the western side of Fairfield County. I've yet to hear anybody say anything bad about her, yet. Other council members, in the past, yes, but I've, I've yet to hear anybody say anything bad. So that just adds fuel to the fire as to, why is she not on a committee? She represents us well. What is she not doing up here that's not translating up here? So, that's why we're here, we stand behind Ms. Peggy one hundred percent, one hundred ten percent. And if I have to make a presentation every week to have the special presentation committee so that we can work that out, then so be it. Sorry for going over my time, thank you.
Jeff Schaefer? Jeff Schaefer?
Sorry you had to call me twice. I'm aware that whatever anyone says tonight, or any night at this meeting, that the chairman, and of course, the rest of you, are not supposed to respond to the speakers. Have you ever asked yourself why? What would make that sound like the best possible action for a public meeting? What would be the point of these meetings if not to expect communication and dialogue? And we just state for the people watching at this circus at home, listen carefully, because what goes on here goes on with you, and you're not here with us, but there are enough people here that are annoyed and aggravated about what's going on. First, your responsibility is to act like adults. Put aside your prejudice or your thinking of how you do things, and act like you're concerned and interested in the welfare of all the citizens. For the umpteenth time, I'm asking you to make a public safety your first and only priority. That's it, simple, I can walk away now. Told you that a hundred times, you ignore me. Please don't talk about a budget, or funding, or things to us until you stop wasting our money on trivial and unimportant matters such as resolutions and ordinances that we live without for years. And only the attorney is interested in writing and preparing these for you, so he could pad his billing to his already heavily inflated paycheck. Let's see if you're listening. First, terminate the attorney's contract. Stop paying him over four hundred thousand dollars in one year to a person who's a part-time attorney. One year. He contributes to what, I don't know, I doubt, but insane stupidity. Use that four hundred thousand dollars and hire a full-time fireman and police officers. And lastly, only elected people, officers, should be seated up there. If you're not elected, you should be in the gallery like everyone else here. The individuals who are speaking at the meetings should be on the camera, the podium should be up there, and all the council people should be in that same frame, so the people at home can watch Mr. Paulie sitting there writing, never picking his head up and looking at anything else but what he's doing. Well, I did, shoot me, I did, I'm just not finished, let me finish. While Mr. Paulie is seated next to the chairman, isn't he close enough to text him a note and tell him what to say next, or whisper in his ear? Please don't interrupt me.
Please do not call names.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know how to address you. Should I address you by your district? Thank you, thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you. And, and please don't interrupt me again. Uh, I'd like that time back on the council. You're, you're just keep, move, killing my time here, and I'll continue to talk. So, we're not in a kingdom, and we're not your subjects, we are your employers. And we will fire you as soon as the next election comes about, and I wanna make that message real clear. Most of you already know that you won't be in that seat in short, uh, it better make the best use of it, and we need to see your results. And I'll reiterate my request that you, the YouTube channel should be reopened to allow public comments, so that you can actually hear what other people think of these meetings. And I urge those watching at home to contact your district councilman and let them know you're upset with their continual lack of transparency and their unwavering position of not hearing the public wants. Write them an email if talking's difficult, if not, let me know, I'm happy to tell these people what's going on. Thank you, and good night.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Now we're down to item eight, public hearing, none. Number nine, ordinance, resolution, and order. Doc Robert?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. An ordinance of the county council for Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, an incentive agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Red to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase and sale agreement by and between Fairfield County and Project Red, and other related matters.
You heard the reading of the courts? Is there a motion? Your second? There's been motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council, what you have before you this evening is ordinance number eight forty-two. As the title says, it's authorizing the county council to go forward with a fee in lieu of tax agreement, as well as a purchase and sale agreement with an entity that is currently known as Project Red. And it's anticipated that this economic development project will invest about thirteen point seven million dollars and create seventy-five new full-time jobs in Fairfield County. And this also, this ordinance also authorizes council to enter into a purchase-sale agreement by which this economic development prospect is gonna purchase approximately thirty acres in the Fairfield Commerce Center.
Any council have any questions discussed? All in favor? Opposed? That recs show six zero. Item ten, board and commission minutes, none. Board and commission appointments, none. Old business, none, new business, none. County administrative report?
Mr. Chairman, not a report, just, uh, an update to you that, uh, the welcome that the citizens, this community have given me, the staff has given me, is great. I've been spending a good bit of time every day, meeting our citizens, going out into the districts. I've, uh, had the opportunity to spend extended time in two of our districts, and I look forward to spending it in the rest of our districts as well, to understand what's important to our citizens and the staff as well, uh, getting to know the dedicated team members, spending time with them. I appreciate the welcome that's been given to me so far, thank you.
Okay. Item fifteen, clerk of court report, Doc Robert?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council, just wanted to remind you of the groundbreaking ceremony for the Fairfield Joint Water Sewer System, the Winsboro Pump Station, that's gonna be on Wednesday, March the twenty-sixth, at two o'clock PM at three ninety-nine East Peach Road.
Thank you. Now we're down to item sixteen, which is county council time, anyone wish to speak?
I do. I just wanted to tell those of you who spoke on my behalf, I am beyond humbled of what you have come to say to council for me. You're my friends, you're my neighbors, and I love you all. I try to do what's good for everybody, I don't care if you're green, yellow, black, white, if you're a purple people eater. We're all out there together, and we're all in this county together, and to move this county forward, we gotta fight together. Thank you all.
Anyone else? Ms. Ruhl?
Um, I just wanna tell, say that, um, I won't be able to make it to the groundbreaking ceremony on Wednesday, I apologize. I'm, um, gonna be out of town, so, I know that, that would be great, though.
Anyone else? Go on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get the names straight. To Ms. Hook, Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Hen, Henderson, and Mr. Schaefer, um, thank you for speaking, I do appreciate that. And our bylaws do preclude us from interacting during public comment session, but we can address things you've said during this county council time. So, I just wanna tell you that I heard what you say, I heard what you said, I appreciate that, and I do take that into consideration when I think about future plans and actions, so thank you for that very much. Just one other thing, Mr. Chairman, um, on last Thursday, Joseph Toledo, who is the director of the Community Development Department, which is our zoning and planning, uh, he and I attended a, um, presentation by a gentleman from the Northeast on conservation subdivisions, and this gentleman's name is Randall Arnt, and he's been doing this for twenty-five, thirty years. A conservation subdivision is basically a residential subdivision where you leave green space in there. And the developer doesn't just come in and, you know, cut every tree down and build houses in every square inch that they can. It's something that's planned, uh, to leave some green space. It's a great concept that I would love to see, uh, enfor, not enforce, but encourage here in Fairfield County, so we don't lose our rural character. He's, this gentleman is pro-growth, but his take is how can a local government take control of development? And so this conservation subdivision is one, one way to do that. He claims that this type of development can actually save the developer, the developer can actually get the same net profit as if the developer had done the, the typical planned development-type concept, because of less infrastructure, like, less roads, less water and sewer piping, and things like that. And plus, you don't have to grade the, the, the area that's left green. So, I talked with Joseph after the meeting, and we do have some words in our current land management ordinance, but there could be other things put in there to kind of encourage developers to, to take this route, such as, uh, reducing permit, uh, time, or permit fees, or impact fees, things like that. So I'd just like to, and I think, and the, we, we as a council haven't really discussed this at depth as far as our vision for the county, but we have had, you know, that's, I remember one brief conversation, I think we're all pretty much aligned on trying to protect the rural, um, nature of our, of our, of our county. And so I, I hope that we can actually, you know, encourage this type of development through our land management ordinance, which is currently being revised, so, um, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Chairman, Chairman, I just have one thing. An individual spoke here tonight that mentioned public safety as a first priority, and they always talking about how much money the attorney makes. This is the same individual that sued our EMS department and sued the county, and our attorney had to defend that lawsuit against this individual, and this individual lost the case. And that's the reason this individual is upset with the attorney, because his case did not win in court. Also, this is the same individual that during the election asked individual candidates to come to his residence, to get them on his side, so they could cater to his demands. So, you know, it, it, it needs to be stated that research needs to be done, because there's always something against the attorney, but our attorney is having to defend lawsuits against this individual.
If you've done nothing illegal, you don't need the attorney. That's how life goes, and you can make any speech you want. What you need to do is give those people the last.
Excuse me, sir. All right. I just wanna thank everyone that came up and, and made their statement this afternoon. I like to say also that the, the, you know, you make a decision, and I don't make it just, just to be making a decision. I have my reason for doing it, and there's been times since I've been on council that I have not been part of commit, of, of a committee, but you do get representation. The council lady, she is heard, and she very well speaks her mind, and we appreciate that. But, when you make a decision, you stick by your decision. Uh, there's a statement also, again, about our lawyer making such an astronomical amount of money, which is not true, you gotta realize, when you see attorney fees, we have a nu, a, a number of different attorneys that have to represent this county. That big, that fee, uh, figure that you see is not for one person. So, I, again, I appreciate each and every one of you, I thank you for your comment. We will take into consideration your comment, and I just want the best for Fairfield County. Appreciate you, and may God bless you, just, each and every one of you. As representative of District Four, I heard you, and those who are close by, where we share resources, I heard you. And I didn't want to end this meeting without saying that. And I said, uh, during my, and, and I wanna add this, I, I, I need to add this. I saw a lot of people, I went to a lot of people's homes during my campaigning. And I'm still invited to a lot of people's home, I'm still meeting a lot of people, I'm still talking to a lot of people. That should not be shortened, that should not be suspect. I'm learning, and I'm getting to know what it is that I am supposed to be doing. And that is my main focus. So, all the press, all the emails, all the text messages, all the phone calls, you have no idea what people are thinking of me and thinking of the council. But I mean, I remain focused, and the focus is on the people and on the county. And as I tell each and every one of them, because I do respond to everybody, it's eleven to twelve o'clock at night, but I respond nevertheless. I hear you, I hear you, thank you.
Thank you. We want to be heard.
Now we're down to item seventeen, executive session, none. Motion to adjourn?
Motion, so moved.
Okay, it's in discussion, all in favor? Opposed? That recs show six zero. That record shows six zero.